Okay, I'm gonna call us to order. Notice is hereby given that a work session of the Salem Kaiser School Board District 24J of Marion County, Salem, Oregon is called for 6:00 PM on Tuesday. Oh, it's not today, Wednesday?
Today is Wednesday.
On Wednesday, and is it the 25th?
Fourth.
It's the 24th. Wednesday, May 24th, at 2017 in Room 2 at the Support Services Center, 2575 Commercial Street, southeast Salem, Oregon, for the discussion of the bond feasibility study and survey results. For the record, all members are present except for Chris Brantley. So, welcome, everyone. Welcome to our consultants, Melissa Martin and Jeannie.
Maggie.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to Kristy Perry to get us started.
All right. Jay Remy, our Communication Relations and Community Relations and Communications Director, is gonna do the introduction of our guests tonight. But just as a reminder to you as a board, that after the Citizens Task Force completed their recommendations to you, this was the next step in the process, was for us to conduct a bond feasibility study. So that's where we are tonight, to hear that report publicly, and then for you to give us some direction after you hear the report. So we're hoping for not just any sort of decision, since we're in a work session, but some consensus on how you'd like us to proceed as the next step. With that, Mr. Remy.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Perry, Chair McMorris Odes and members of the board. Thank you. This is a very exciting step in this process. It's one of many, many steps, but it's a very exciting one for me. I am pleased to introduce Melissa Martin and Jeannie Magmar. Melissa works for the Nelson Report and Jeannie works for C&amp;M Communications. They both have years of experience helping districts lay a foundation for winning campaigns in exactly this type of a situation, where we've got needs in our district. And up to, as recently as eight days ago, they had some, their fingerprints on some winning campaigns. So it's great to have them here. I should say to have them here again. Ten years ago, practically to the day, they were here. So Rick and Chuck remember that probably, and some of the rest of us remember that, prior to our last bond campaign, which was successful. So Melissa is going to talk a little bit about the survey that was conducted, the methodology, the results, and then share some of her conclusions and recommendations. She's also gonna answer any questions that we may have. Jeannie is going to kind of co-present, jump in as needed, along with providing additional voter analysis and comparison of survey results and voter trends in our community in recent elections and past elections. And she too has some conclusions and recommendations that will help us as we move ahead. And I just wanted to offer a brief reminder that everything that we discuss tonight is to inform and help us get a better sense of what the voters in our community think of our ideas and what they want to do and what they feel like they can support. We're not hearing hard and fast rules and things that we have to do or cannot do, but we are getting information that will help you, as you deliberate and you direct district staff, to go forward and come up with some recommendations. So, we also, it's a reminder that it's based on the current knowledge that's in our community, and we've only really begun the information effort in earnest to get the word out about our facility's needs. And we have a lot more work to do, and of course, there will be a campaign at some point, and that will do a lot too, to get the word out there. But, tonight, like I said, it's a very interesting step and a very, a very exciting step. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Melissa Martin and Jeannie Magmar, and have them come up here and have them present to us. Thank you.
I just would like to know, as you're presenting, would it be best if the board held questions till you finished, or would you like them to interrupt you to ask questions, should they have them?
Probably on the survey research side, some of those questions might be answered as we proceed through the results, so maybe hold your questions on, as we go through the survey results till the end, unless there's something really pressing that, as far as you, your review of the survey results, if you know that that hasn't been addressed based on later results, then you can interrupt us.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, as Jay said, we were here ten years ago, almost to the day, I think. And what we told you then was that you had a fighting chance of winning a bond measure, which at that point was going to be the largest bond measure in the state of Oregon, providing you didn't increase the tax rate, and that you paid close attention to what the data said about what the community would and wouldn't support. And you did it. You went out, you put a measure on the ballot that did not increase the tax rate, and you won. Well, we're here tonight to tell you that the survey shows you have a fighting chance of winning this bond measure too, which is even bigger than the one you did ten years ago. And this time, you can increase the tax rate. And the reason we say that is not only based on the data that we are going to present to you tonight, but also the fact that your neighbor to the south, Albany, passed a major increase for that community, an additional 64 cents per thousand, which for that community, with their demographics and their economic profile, is huge. And then your neighbor to the north, Portland, passed a $790 million bond measure, which is more than what you're looking at. And that will increase the tax rate in Portland by a dollar and 40 cents for the next four years. And then they have a 30-year bond, which will average out as an increase of 68 percent per thousand. So, in both of those elections, the turnout was about 30 percent. And we're gonna be talking to you tonight about the fact that if you go in November, you're looking at it about a 30 to 40 percent turnout rate. And in Portland, they got 66 percent yes. In Albany, they wound up with a 53 percent victory in Lynn County and 57 percent in Benton County. So, good results. And you too can do it, if you pay attention to the results of the survey as we present them tonight. And also, who's gonna turn out to vote in November? Or even in, if you decide to delay it to May of 2018, you have that option as well. Who's gonna turn out? Well, if you'll look on page eight of my report, what I've done on pages eight and nine, is I've taken the sample that the Nelson Report surveyed, and I've taken your voter demographics and I compared them. And I did that to determine whether or not you had a valid survey, and you do. I want you to especially look at who votes, though, because people that are, that vote regularly wind up being over 45. They're in my age group. I, I just, we just did the May 16th election. I live at Willamette View in Clackamas County. We had an 80 percent turnout for school board members and fire district members. So, and we're all over 70. So we're gonna, you know, that age group's gonna be there in your election. And, and they represent 66 percent of the folks that were surveyed. And the reason that's so high and that's so valid is because with a 30 percent turnout or a 40 percent turnout in November or May, those are the folks that are gonna be voting for you. Because they're the folks that vote in every election, or they'll be there for three out of four elections. We've got more people on the voter rolls. They won't necessarily vote, but anybody that's newly registered is also a target group for you. So you can look through the statistics here, and you can see that this is what your middle column is what your community looks like. Right-hand column is the survey data. It lines up really well, and on that basis, you have a valid survey. If you'll turn over to page 10, and we'll be coming back to this at the end, but I just wanna point out to you that we take this, the numbers on pages eight and nine, put them in a table to see what, what we can predict for a voter turnout and what you have to have for yes votes. I did this for Albany, and I went back and looked at it the other day when I was getting ready for this presentation. And I want you to know that this chart, in our experience in C&amp;M Communications, tends to be a pretty close predictor to what's gonna happen on your vote in your election. And those four out of four folks are gonna be there, and they're gonna determine what happens. And as you can see by the numbers, if you get the vote, yes voters to turn out, you've got a 59 percent chance of winning. So, with that, Melissa, you wanna go through the numbers?
I also wanna just take a couple of minutes on page eight, turn your attention back to page eight for a moment, because I think it's very compelling when you take a look at who your frequent voter groups are. And if you look at those people who have voted in the last three out of four elections, who are, you know, three out of four times, they come out and vote, 71 percent of those voters are over the age of 45 and less likely to have kids in school. And 46 percent of that 71 percent are over the age of 60. Then when you look at your perfect voters, and these are the people who show up at every single election, 85 percent are over the age of 45, with 67 percent over the age of 60. So, the, the point I'm trying to make is, as you move forward and begin your, your potential campaign, the people that you're gonna wanna be focusing and targeting are your frequent voters. And those are the people that you're gonna wanna pay particular attention to when you're looking at these surveys results as well, because they are the ones who are likely going to decide, decide your measure. So we completed a sample of 385 surveys with registered voters in the Salem Kaiser School District. We drew our sample from people who had voted in at least one out of the last four elections. It, a 385 sample is a plus or minus 5 percent margin of error at the 95 percent level of confidence, which means if we were to conduct the same survey 100 times, it should come within that plus or minus 5 percent margin of error, 95 out of 100 times. The one thing I do want to, as a survey researcher, it's my job to be very realistic with you and to caution you, we do have that plus or minus 5 percent margin of error, but I always tell clients, it's always safer to err on the side of being conservative, so taking that 5 percent off, as opposed to erring on the side of being too generous and adding 5 percent to the survey results. 60 percent of the people that we talked to were frequent or perfect voters, which means that they voted in at least three out of four or four out of four of the last elections. And 66 percent of those people that participated in the survey were over 45 years of age. And again, going back to what we were talking about just a moment ago, those are the people who make up your most frequent voter groups. We began the survey by asking people an open-ended question. We did not offer any responses. We asked people what two or three of the most serious issues facing Salem Kaiser School District today were. Overcrowded classes came in at number one. 34 percent of respondents gave that as a response. Lack of funding came in number two at 18 percent. Need more teachers at 7 percent. Facilities are old at 22, or at 6 percent. Mismanaged funds at 5 percent. Budget cuts, 4 percent. Poor curriculum, 4 percent. Too much administration, 4 percent. High dropout rate, 4 percent. And students aren't getting a good education. We then came in and asked them whether or not they believed Salem Kaiser Schools were overcrowded. And a very large percentage of respondents, 68 percent, agreed that yes, Salem Kaiser Schools are overcrowded. The one piece of information that I think is also important is that nearly a quarter of respondents didn't know whether or not the schools were overcrowded. And what's interesting is the people who didn't know were your older voters, and the people who were more likely to oppose the measure were not, did not know that the schools were overcrowded. So what that tells us is further communication about the condition and overcrowding issue in the schools will be key as you move forward here. We then came in and asked what we call a non-biased who's-ahead question. And this question is designed in such a way so that it gives people an idea what components would be included in the bond, and gives them the total cost of the bond, as well as how much per thousand the bond is going to cost property taxpayers. This is a very important question in that every other question is measured against this one question. So in this initial question, 60 percent initially favored a $766 million bond measure, 39 percent strongly favored, and 21 percent somewhat favored. I do wanna point out that that 39 percent that's strongly favored, it's more likely for us to see a lower number in the strongly column and a higher number in the somewhat column on the favor side. So that is, that shows that there's some, you've got a good solid 40 percent of people who are very supportive of schools. Add to that also, that plus or minus 5 percent, even if we err on the side of being conservative, you're still at 55 percent. Do I think that a $3 per thousand bond measure is high? Yes, and we'll see that later as we move through the data. But this is really strong, these are really strong positive results, and this should give you some good, a good feeling about the possibility of passing a bond for your community. We then came in and asked people why they favored or opposed the bond measure. So 60 percent said they favored the measure. 24 percent that favored said that education is important. 22 percent said schools need funding. And 14 percent said that we always support education. The top reasons for opposing the proposal, 35 percent of all respondents. 29 percent of those said their, the district was asking for too much money. 21 percent said mismanaged the money they have. And 16 percent said taxes are too high. We then came in with a series of questions that we call the If You Knew Series. And this series of questions is measured against that who's-ahead question that we initially tested. This series is designed to present one piece of information and ask with that piece of information, would they favor or oppose. One of the reasons why we design our questionnaires the way that we do, by only isolating one piece of information, is if, let's say we're talking about technology and we're talking about protecting the people's investment in school buildings, you might have a high number of support or a high level of support, but you don't know whether it's protecting the investment that's driving the, the support, or whether it is technology. So that's why we design these questions the way that we do. So as you can see, 60 percent of respondents initially favored the proposal, 35 percent opposed. When we asked, or when we told people or talked about vocational, career, and technical classrooms at each of the district's high schools, that number jumped to 74 percent, which is a 14 percent gain. That is a very strong message, and as you'll see as we move through the data, this is the top, this is the number one thing that people cared about. Next was enabling the district to construct additional space, such as classrooms, library space, and cafeterias at middle schools. 72 percent favored with that piece of information, which was a 12 percent gain. Now here, we talk about portable classrooms. And the point I wanna make on this particular argument is it's not getting rid of 70 percent of the classroom, or the portable buildings that is driving this message. It is replacing worn-out portable buildings with permanent classrooms would save the district thousands of dollars per year of maintenance costs that could be redirected into the classroom. So I'd wanna make that perfectly clear, that to not get caught up on replacing portables as the message. The message is replacing portables will save the district in operating costs. You had 11 percent gain with that piece of information. Knowing that all of the district's middle and high schools would receive new science labs to improve the number of science opportunities available for students, 71 percent favored with that piece of information. Tying that information back to technology and career technical would be a very, would help strengthen this message. When we talk about safety and security improvements, you'll see later on, as we go through the priority series, that seismic actually comes in stronger than safety and security, but seismic and safety and security do pull very strongly here. 71 percent of respondents favored the measure when presented that, with information that the measure would include safety and security improvements. Nine of the district's elementary schools were constructed without cafeterias, and that this bond would enable the district to resolve this issue. You saw a 9 percent gain with that piece of information. This is not a complete list of all of the questions that we asked, this is a partial list, but these are the main pieces that drew people or that moved people in favor the measure. Then when we talked about technology, wireless networks, and data center, you can see that there was a 0 percent gain with that piece of information. It really didn't make any impact whatsoever on people's opinions. Then we talk about the current Auburn Elementary School not being large enough to provide adequate space, and that the proposed bond measure would construct a new Auburn Elementary. 59 percent favored with that piece of information, which was a 1 percent loss in support. I will say that although it doesn't show here, in the executive summary, you will see that when we present information about Auburn being used for another educational purpose, that does increase support for replacing Auburn Elementary School. But I will say that Auburn is one of the least, or one of the lesser popular components within the bond that we tested. And the biggest issue in the, what, what actually reduced support by the largest margin was information about the cost of the bond measure costing people $3 per thousand, or $600 per year for the owner of a home with a $200,000 home. Again, I caution you, that's a 6 percent loss. When you subtract, you know, you subtract 5 percent from 54, that's 49 percent. So you're right on the cusp here, which tells me that cost is a real concern. We will see that as we go through the survey. I just wanna point that out to you because it is a prevalent issue here. We then came in and asked about new high schools versus expanding existing high schools. And 46 percent of respondents prefer to expand existing high schools over constructing new high schools. Only 24 percent prefer to do that. We then came in with a priority series, and we asked people to rate each individual component, as they were read to them, on a scale of one to four, with one representing a low priority and four representing a high priority. The ones and twos were collapsed into a low priority, and the threes and fours were collapsed into a high priority. So you'll see here that these have been displayed to you in descending order of priority. So again, vocational, career, technical, 70 percent of respondents thought that was a high priority for the district. Seismic upgrades came in second at 69 percent, actually, I guess they're tied, at 69 percent who thought that was a high priority. Improvements such as painting the exterior of schools, so protecting the community's investment, 69 percent believe that was a high priority. Constructing additional space at 22 elementary schools to address capacity issues, 68 percent thought that was a high priority. One thing I do wanna talk about a little bit, we did do some messaging around overcrowding and capacity issues. And one of the things that we saw was combining library classrooms, gymnasiums, and so on, were strong messages. Really, probably the strongest way and the best way to talk about it is, you know, constructing additional space to address capacity issues and relieve overcrowding. And you can get into those details as needed, but really, the message here is addressing additional space to address capacity and to relieve overcrowding. Because really, gymnasiums, libraries, cafeteria space, all those things are space issues.
Just to comment on that too, when you look at the survey results, we do have some questions that pull out cafeterias, pull out gymnasiums separately. And what you'll see in the results is there's a dip. There's, there's much less support for it than when you talk about it as a, as a whole.
And you'll see as we go through these priority series. Safety and security improvements, now this focuses strictly on the safety piece, the security piece. 63 percent of respondents thought this was a high priority. Expanding and construction, instructing, constructing additional space at the high schools, 59 percent thought that was a high priority. Cafeterias at the district's elementary schools, 59 percent thought that was a high priority. Talk about gymnasiums, 58 percent think that's a high priority. Libraries is at 55 percent. So you're starting to see that support level come down as we start getting into some of these other components. Purchase property and construct a new Auburn, only 51 percent of respondents thought that was a high priority. Technology infrastructure upgrades, such as expanding wireless networks and relocating the data center, 51 percent thought that was a high priority. 46 percent thought that was a low priority. And then selling existing property and building a new administrative office to consolidate and centralize administrative functions, 71 percent of respondents thought that was a low priority, which is a cause for concern. I would say that that is definitely probably not something that, you know, you wanna be advertising that that's what you're gonna be paying for.
Yeah. And one other comment about those, notice that the price tag is attached to all of them. And what we noticed as we went through the survey is whenever we attached a price tag to something, then we got a more negative response than when, when it was just open-ended and you could feel good about saying, that's important.
Yes. When you talk about the, the project itself, by itself without the cost, people are way more willing to say yes to it when you start attaching cost to it. So what that tells you is those are the more realistic numbers here. And those are the numbers in the priority series, that's really telling you a pretty significant story. The numbers are still good. They're not bad, but there's something to pay attention to, especially when you consider that there's an error rate involved here. We then came in and asked questions how, about, a question about how much they would be willing to pay per thousand in school property taxes to address growing enrollment, improve access to career vocational technical programs, and improve safety and security for Salem Kaiser Schools. 72 percent of respondents were willing to pay more in taxes. You'll see the chart on the right actually outlines, you know, the level of how much people were willing to pay. 21 percent of respondents said nothing. 9 percent said between one cent and 75 percent, or 75 cents, and so on. So you can see how the number kinda rises and falls depending on the, on the range. We did not give them the range. They told us, and then the interviewers filled in the appropriate range area. So, next, we came in with the Agree/Disagree series, and it is designed to test some of our earlier minds of questions. So, let's say if someone knew something to be true, would they favor or oppose the measure? We then come in with purposefully prejudicial statements to find out whether or not they believe it to be true. If there is a big disconnect between the If You Knew question and the Agree/Disagree question and the priority question, that tells us that the district is going to need to do more education to convince people that that is indeed true. So that is why some of these questions are, seem like they're repeating themselves, but there's a method to our madness. So you'll see here, when we talk about vocational, career, technical programs, 74 percent favored with that piece of information. When we talk about the pri, gave them that question in the priority series, 70 percent rated that as a high priority. And then on the Agree/Disagree question, I want Salem Kaiser School District to be able to offer high-quality courses and options that give local students the best chance of finding a living wage job immediately after graduating. I would favor a measure that includes enhancements to vocational, career, technical. 79 percent of respondents agreed with that statement. 79% of respondents agreed with that statement. This is, again, as I said earlier, this is your strongest message. This is the one thing that, it not only resonates in this community, but it's resonating statewide. When we talked about safety and security upgrades, 71% initially favored with that piece of information. We talk about seismic upgrades, 69% believe that was a high priority. When we talked about just the security component, 63% thought that was a high priority. And then in the agree/disagree statement, ensuring the safety and security of our students is more important than ever. I would support a measure that includes seismic upgrades and to high and very high-risk schools, upgrading aging electronic badge access systems and controlled entryways. 70% agreed with that statement. So in this series, or in this grouping of questions, we talk about overcrowding. You can see there's a series of if you knew questions that were related to overcrowding. You can see sort of where, you know, you start out at 72%, and that's when we're talking about classrooms and classrooms, library space and cafeteria at the middle schools, 72% favored. Talking about enrollment increasing by more than 1,000 students over the next five years, 69% favored with that piece of information. The increasing capacity at the traditional high schools, 68% favored with that piece of information. And then additional classroom space, library space, gyms and cafeterias, 66% favored with that piece of information. In the priority series, again, you'll see here when you talk about additional space at 22 elementary schools to address capacity, relieve overcrowding, 68% see that as a high priority. That is how I would talk about the space if you're going to proceed forward with addressing capacity, that's how I would talk about it. Expand and construct additional space at the district's high schools, 59% thought that was a high priority. Student enrollment is expected to increase by more than 1,000 students over the next five years, 67% agreed with the statement that they believe that the district should address these space issues. Again, we're talking about, this is sort of isolating the library, gymnasiums and cafeteria space, which has the same agree/disagree questions with it. When we talk about technology infrastructure, you can see there's a disconnect here, and I think part of that is a lot of what you addressed in your last measure addressed technology issues, isn't that correct? And so there may be some remembrance, especially among your frequent voters who remember 10 years ago when they voted on the measure, that you've already spent money on technology. And then as we look at the cost of the bond measure to property taxpayers, 54% favored when presented with the cost of the measure. Then in the agree/disagree series, I would oppose a $766 million bond measure that would cost me an additional $3 per thousand, but I would support a smaller bond that reduced the additional cost to $1.50 per thousand. 46% disagreed with that statement. And then I would support a bond measure that would maintain what I'm currently paying in school property taxes, but I will oppose any measure that increases what I'm currently paying. 52% disagreed. These aren't really strong numbers, but it tells me that people are not opposed to increasing their taxes, you just have to be careful about how much you ask for. And then this simply just has the agree/disagree series in descending order of agreement. We've kind of already gone through all of these questions. You can look through that on your own. Probably what I want to say, what I want to say is that, you know, there is initial strong support for a bond measure. We did not test a smaller bond measure. The purpose of this survey was, we knew you were early in the process and you weren't sure, the board wasn't sure exactly what it wanted to go for, so we put together a proposal that sort of gave you almost everything that you wanted, to give you a sense of what the community will and won't tolerate. So what this tells us is that the community is very supportive of addressing capacity issues. They're very supportive of addressing and increasing and enhancing vocational career technology programs. They like the idea of replacing worn-out portable classrooms that will save the district in operating costs that can be redirected into other things. So I, I mean, I think that there's some really good information here, and we tell our clients that we like to see at least 60% support, which is what you have. So to us, you're not coming from, you're not, you're not starting out in the negative because I've worked with some districts where they see 46% initial support for a bond measure. You're at 60%. Does that mean that you're going to pass a $3 per thousand bond measure? Probably not. Does that mean that you can pass a bond measure to address some of the facility needs? Absolutely, I would say yes. So, you know, I think that what's most important, that is if the district moves forward with a bond measure, your messages need to be woven into a strategic, they need to be very focused. Everybody that's working on the campaign and delivering messages needs to be delivering those same messages, those messages that were tested in the survey. And you need to really talk about those things that people highly value, which is, again, vocational, additional space to address overcrowding and saving the district money in operating costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we do some questions on the numbers?
To further, oh, you're going to ask?
Could we ask questions now on your numbers, or should we?
Well, let me, let me just show you, I only have a few things to point out to you and then we'll talk about it. The back part of the report, the back part of the report that I do is I take all of the questions in the survey and take a look at all of the demographics and put it in a table format that you can go through and take a look at each of the questions by topic. So all of the cost questions are together, all of the overcrowding questions are together, all of the questions related to high schools and middle schools are together, district-wide improvements. And so you can use this, these tables as you look through the survey to kind of see, you know, where are we on cost? And you can see why we're saying what we're saying. There's also some color coding in this. If the numbers are red, it means that that issue is problematic. If the numbers are in green, it means that those are strong messages and strong components that you can kind of be sure to include in your bond measure. And then I shaded females, the 45 to 60-plus age groups, and the 3 out of 4 and 4 out of 4 voters to call your attention to what they're saying, because those are the people that are going to determine this bond measure. Those are the people that are going to be outvoting. And the good news is when women are most supportive, I don't know if you guys have had this experience, but in most households, if the women voters say vote for the schools, you do. And one, I probably, this is an aside, but we had a young woman down in Nescuin who wanted the, wanted the middle school because when she was in second, when she was in sixth grade, she'd been sent to the high school when they promised a middle school. Her daughter was getting ready to go to a middle school and she really wanted it, and she wrote this heartfelt letter to 3,000 voters in Nescuin, all women. And her phone started ringing off the hook, and it was all the women saying, "Don't worry, dear, everyone in this household is going to vote for the bond measure." And they passed it handily, so. Just an aside about how important a woman's vote can be in your households, along with those 3 out of 4s and 4 out of 4s and us old folks. So I wanted to draw your attention to that, and then my conclusions are on the first page of my report. I think it's very important that you honor the survey findings, that you take a look at those as a guide to what you can do. And as I looked at them, it seemed to me that you were in the middle range of possibilities, anywhere from $1.50 to $2.50. Somewhere in that range is a sweet spot for getting this measure passed. So I don't, you know, you guys have got to work the numbers. I don't think you can get $3, but I think you can get somewhere in that middle range. And you got to take a look at those least popular items and see what you can do about them. You don't necessarily have to eliminate a new Auburn Elementary School, but I would tuck it in with the other elementary school improvements and talk about it as a space issue, more than a new school issue. And then eliminating the administrative office space, I think is a given. I think that would become an object that would give everybody in the community that wanted, that wanted a reason to vote no to vote no. And then focus on expansion and renovation rather than building new. There seems to be a theme in this, especially among your older voters, where they want to fix what you have, and they want you to make sure there's enough space for the kids, but they don't necessarily want a new school that's going to cost. And I think maybe the cost on Auburn Elementary was an issue because $45 million for a school sounds like a lot of money. So that's an issue. And the other thing we saw in the survey was, there seems to be, when you look at the geographic areas, there's a difference of opinion. It's not, you can't just say that West Salem supports these things and Kaiser supports these things. It's kind of all over the lot. And so I think having something for everybody is also an element in this, so that every, every part of your district has something that they can hang on to and say, "Yeah, we want that." So you can certainly read through all of this stuff. Our phone numbers are handy. If you have any questions, we'll be very happy after tonight to answer them, or you can take this home for bedtime reading. I'm sure it'll put you to sleep, Jim.
Questions?
I have one.
Sure.
To determine the 3 out of 3s and the 4 out of 4s, did you do that from voter rolls or did you ask them?
No, no, we did it from voter rolls. We do not ask because people lie.
I was just going to say, as a notorious liar to surveys, that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeanne, you mentioned, in your opinion, there was maybe a sweet spot range of 1.5 to 2.5. That's, that's not a cap, that's an increase in, an average increase in the property tax. Not a cap of 2.5, an average increase of 2.5 on the upper end, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's over what you're paying now.
Right.
And I, you know, I think one of the most encouraging things that we saw in this survey, because, you know, up until this year, we've been telling districts, you can't pass a bond measure with a, with a tax increase. And suddenly this year, there seems to be an opening and people are understanding that you've got, it's going to cost them more if they want good schools.
I think also a factor in that, though, is whether or not the community values the components within the bond. If they see it as value. So protecting the community's existing investment in schools by, you know, renovating existing buildings rather than tearing down and building new, all those things are things that people value. People are really, really strongly valuing this vocational career technical piece. It's universal. I have not seen one district where this was not their number one message. So, you know, just, it's really, I think the thing that's, that's positive for the board is that you have good information, you have data now to work with. And you can take a look at this data and you can, you know, take it apart and put it together any way you want. And, you know, you've asked the community what they will and won't support. Does this mean that, you know, we've made a promise here that this is what we're going to give to the community? No. You can come back later if you need to and do another survey to, if you come up with a different proposal that's a smaller, at a smaller level, to see where community support is on that. So you've got, this is merely intended to give you information, and, you know, you're still early in the process. None of this stuff is, is, they're not promises. This was out, we surveyed the community to get their opinion to help you make a more informed decision.
And it lets you say to the community, "We asked you what you wanted. This is what you told us was most important to you. That's what's in the bond measure. We hope you'll support it."
Chuck?
You know, I, I worked, I remember you back in 1988 or '87, whenever it was you were here, but I worked hard on that one and I will work hard on this one. But a question I've got, kind of goes back to page 6 in your, in this handout here. Really, I have two questions or two concerns. One is, is that on the who's ahead, the $766 million bond measure, we're at 60%. And having been familiar with the police bond measure that failed the first time through, they started at 66%. And so, you know, you've got in this community, within the past year, poll results that showed support for the police bond at 60, at 66%. This is 60%. How do you explain?
I would say the difference is, I know that the Salem Police Bond had an organized opposition campaign against it, which you're fighting against that. You're always going to have a reduction in your level of support when you have an organized opposition campaign. A lot of it also is very dependent on the campaign, how the campaign itself is organized, and, you know, whether or not they've really delved deeply into the data and organized and focused and targeted their messages appropriately. I'm not saying that, you know, I mean, I do think that the opposition campaign had a lot to do with that because it was very organized and they were very vocal about it.
And, you know, I would have to think that there will be opposition to this, too.
Well, if there is, one of the things that happens when an opposition group forms is it tends to get you off message. You tend to want to respond to what those folks are saying because nine out of 10 times what they're saying isn't going to be true. And when you get sucked into that and you get off your message and you stop getting those targeted messages out to the people that you need to get it out to, and, and you, and you, you know, I, when I've had this situation and I've been able to convince districts that they stay on message, and if there's anything in the newspaper, the only way to respond is to stay on message and ignore what the opposition is saying and just deliver your message. And...
And I felt, I felt like the police campaign tried to do that, you know, but it was not successful. It went down by quite a bit.
Well, I'd like to know what they did for targeting. Did they target it? Did they, had, were they, had they identified the people that they needed to get to the polls to vote yes for?
I believe...
Because one of the things that, you know, one of the hardest things to do is to take that number on page 10. And, you know, we're saying you've got to at least talk to 70,058 voters. You've got to deliver your key messages to that number of voters in order to get 41,000 of them to vote yes. And you know you're going to have close to 30,000 that are going to vote no, no matter what you do.
Yeah.
It says tax, they're no. And it's always harder to get yes voters to vote yes. So, you know, hopefully you won't have a really organized opposition. You may know, you may know a group that's forming. If they're mad at the police, let's hope they stay mad at the police and leave you guys alone.
Yeah, I'm just, having been through this before, kind of recognized some of the pitfalls in it, and that's, that's one of the things I noticed between the police campaign and this one, is that we're going in with less favorable statistics than the police did when they, when they lost theirs. The other question I've got is, in order to reach that many voters, and maybe I missed it, but is there something in your study that indicates, have we got time to put together an enormous campaign between now and November to be successful? Would that be... Would that be your recommendation? Or in order to put together the type of campaign that we need to do to, you know, almost double the amount of bond money that we went for back in two thousand eight, do we need, do we need more time?
I think you need more time. That's my, I mean, personally, I think you need more time. I don't think that you can, you haven't put together, if you already had voted on a bond package and you'd done this work a while back, I would say maybe. But I think that you're running against a time crunch here that is going to be very difficult to overcome. And you need time. I mean, it takes time to deliver messages and for them to resonate. They say that it takes an average of, what, five or six contacts before a message starts?
Nine.
Nine. That before a message actually starts to resonate in a person's mind. So if, when you consider that and, you know, what the task here is, it's a big task. It's a big community.
I think especially with schools, too, because it's summer, all of our supporters are...
Yeah.
On vacation.
On vacation.
Yeah.
Do you have a, can I keep asking questions?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any kind of ballpark figure on, on what it would cost to put together what you think would be a successful campaign?
Yeah, on page, yeah, where is it?
I saw your conclusions and I...
Yeah, on page six. You've got to raise between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars to finance the kind of campaign that you're going to need to reach seventy thousand plus voters.
Another factor, and I don't know if it came out in the polling at all, but when we passed this in two thousand eight, the chamber was pretty clear that we will support this, but don't come back again next time for money for deferred maintenance and other things. We recognize that, you know, we've got issues and things, but we will support you this time. But to come back again for another campaign that's asking for deferred maintenance, you don't want to get into that. So did any of that come out in the surveys at all?
I didn't hear, we didn't hear any, you know, I do hear about comments that are made as people are doing the interviewing. Nothing came back to me in terms of that, of what that, where that is. I'm looking at where that particular... Sixty-five million and a seven hundred and sixty-six million dollar bond isn't a whole lot. And really, you know, I mean, I, it's been ten years, things wear out.
I get it, I get it. And, you know, I'd work hard on this campaign because I believe in it and compliment you on the in-depth information you've given us. Thanks.
Other questions?
I have one.
Jim?
So Jeannie, you said in a November election, you're looking at a thirty to forty percent voter turnout?
And I based that on...
Previous.
Marion County elections, previous Marion County elections.
And Melissa, you said, we're not ready for a November election. We're probably then looking at a May election. What's the voter turnout in the May elections, Jeannie?
Well, it's... With vote by mail, it's probably, again, about forty to fifty percent. Generally, even your elections in, that are non-presidential year elections, we get, depending on the communities, we get about fifty percent turnout, forty to fifty.
I want to interject here. I had, did a ten-year study on school bonds only, using the OSBA's data that they've collected. And when you compare May to November, it's actually pretty stunning. In May, sixty-five, overall May success over the last ten years for school bonds only, sixty-five percent of school districts have passed their bonds over the last ten years in May. And then sixty-three percent of May to, this, this May, two thousand seventeen, districts passed their bonds. In November, the overall success rate is forty-seven percent. I will tell you, I have my own personal, non-scientific reasons why I think that is. In October, about the time that your ballots show up, you get your property tax bill. And, you know, you're being, you're being asked to increase your taxes. And if you do go out on the ballot in November and you're competing against another money measure, sometimes that creates a situation where people either choose one or the other, which actually can drive down support for your bond, or they'll say no to both because they don't want to pay for any, you know, there's just too many money measures on the ballot. So, you know, and even when you look at, I broke it out in all kinds of different ways in terms of the success rate, trying to figure out, and May is just overall more successful, even in a presidential election. Only forty-nine percent of school districts in the last ten years passed a bond measure in a presidential election. And if you think about it logically, you're thinking about your younger voters show up at a higher percentage in a presidential election, but they also don't vote the entire ballot. And money measures and local measures are at the end of the ballot. So that becomes problematic. So anyway, this is, this is scientific information about Oregon's school passage rates. And so I can't tell you that May is more successful than November. Does that mean, am I promising you're going to win? No, but your chances are greater, I think, in May.
Are there questions? Rick?
On the, on the results, how do I want to word this? You know, ten years ago, you gave us some information and recommendations and the data showed you certain trends. Do you ever go back after we do, after a bond is done and compare the results of the bond versus what you thought? And if you do, did you do it on our last bond and...
If I did, I'd have to go back in my files and look and see. I did it for the Albany because that was just fresh in my mind. Took my little chart on page ten and looked at the numbers and they were almost exactly what the turnout was. So that chart on page ten is pretty prophetic, providing you have a good campaign and you target those messages to the people that need to hear them.
Yeah, that doesn't mean you're going to pass at sixty percent if you do nothing. You will have to work for this.
Yeah. And I would hope that whatever you put on the ballot and whatever your key messages are, by the time you pass it, you're so sick of hearing them, you don't ever want to hear them again because you've said them so many times in so many ways to so many people.
Jay?
Well, I was just going to say thanks, but I, for them, so go ahead.
I thought you had a comment.
So early in the results that Melissa gave us, there was, I think it was Melissa, there was a chart that talked about the top of it was overcrowding.
Yes.
And not very far down was mismanagement of funds.
That was a pretty small percentage. I think it was four percent of everybody.
Okay, it was pretty high on the list.
Yes, but, yeah, but if you look at it...
But you have a big drop-off.
So mismanaged funds, twenty people out of three hundred and eighty-five gave that as a response, which was five percent of everybody. You know, I mean, it's...
And is that a typical number?
Like every, there's these, there's five percent of the public that thinks any public entity mismanages funds?
Yes. I will say that over the fifteen years I've been doing this work, when I first started, school districts enjoyed a much higher level of trust. But I think as, you know, time has gone by and there's been some issues in accountability and just how people view public entities, that level of support has gone down. So we do see higher now, but this is not unusual for you. This is what we're seeing universally.
The reason I questioned it is that I felt like this community really believed that we did an excellent job of managing money on our last bond. You know, we, we went much further with the dollars than we promised we would.
Have you been talking about that over the years?
We have, but not recently. I mean, we talked about it a lot as we had to keep coming back and saying, so we're not out of money yet, what should we spend the money on now? You know, we had a lot of those conversations, but it hasn't been before the public in a while. But it, that's why I think that number stuck out to me because I felt like this community felt like we did a really good job of managing the money in that bond. But the other really quick question I had was about, do you know who, so the four out of four voters are people who vote in every single election? And the one out of four voters are probably presidential election year voters?
Yes.
What are the others, two out of?
Two out of fours, they're kind of a wild card. They vote in fifty percent of the elections. They're probably more likely to vote in a general than in a primary. But, you know, they are the wild cards. They can, they decide to vote, they may not decide to vote. They might be their second year in a row, you know, or second election in a row voting and they're planning on voting in the next, you know, four elect, or two elections to be a perfect voter. It's, they're a wild card. And so you really have to look at them as, you know, fifty percent, you can count on fifty percent of them showing up.
And we used to, when Melissa and I were first doing this, we used to split the undecided or the not sure voter on the who's ahead question. And we'd say half of them had voted yes and half of them had to vote no. We don't do that anymore because they all vote no. So you're opposed and you're not sure, you're not sure is they're not sure because they don't want to tell you their no's.
And has anything that's happened in this country in the last six months or eight months changed the likeliness of people to vote, in your opinion?
I will tell you that there have been two occasions that have really impacted survey results versus election results. One was nine eleven and the other one was two thousand eight, the crash, the economic or housing crash of two thousand eight. Those were the two big events that happened that did influence how people responded versus what they said they were going to do before those events happened. So, you know, at this point, we're not seeing that as a trend. Does that mean that it couldn't happen? I'm not saying that it couldn't happen, but it would have to be a pretty big event. And those are the only two in the fifteen years I've been doing this that I've seen a real impact. How about you?
About the same.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Mike has some additional information for you.
Mike's going to whiteboard us. We're going to do just a little, little whiteboard math exercise.
You have to speak loud because you're not close to the mic at all, Mike.
Right, we're just going to have to improvise. So you heard the results from the polling. And so we know that, we have to come off of seven sixty-six. So let's go through a little exercise, starting with the recommendations of the task force. Core capacity and infrastructure.
In other words, overcrowding?
Yes, and that's great, thank you, because we're translating from the verbiage, the language that we used in the task force report and the long-range facility plan over, you'll see as we move from left to right on the whiteboard, to what new messaging might look like. So this is overcrowding. But in the task force report, it was four hundred and forty-three million for capacity.
Does that include seismic?
Getting there, next.
No, that's capacity, just capacity.
Seismic. One fifty-one. Non-routine maintenance, which used to be called deferred maintenance years ago, is those non-routine issues like HVAC system replacements, roofing.
Can I just ask about that in response to Chuck's question? These are, this is repair and replacement that has not been deferred but is wearing out now.
And will be in the next ten years, which is why the language has changed in bond measures to non-routine maintenance. It's not deferred maintenance like it was in two thousand eight.
Right, but it would seem important to message the public that this is different than where we were in the last bond where we had, because we didn't have enough money, had deferred. Very important, future maintenance.
Yeah.
Very different things.
So I'll tell you what, here's some messaging. How about this? Those are, those are two areas that we will need to focus on. Safety and security. Thirty-seven. Administer, the consolidation of the administrative functions. Now remember, the way that that was asked was right out of the task force recommendation, which was basically selling all of our property like this and buying new land and consolidating all of our administrative functions. Safety and security, thirty-seven mil, million, and then technology, twelve. All right, so now we're going to move over to the math problem. And we start at seven hundred and sixty-six million. I'm not even going to touch, in this exercise, I'm not even going to touch the overcrowding because in this overcrowding number includes science, includes CTE. Those are some of the really powerful messages that you've heard that voters are interested and that are important in this bond. So let's say in this exercise here, we had ninety-five million, I'm sorry, there's a hundred and fifty-one million for seismic. Now remember, that was two numbers. That was fifty-six million for the very high risk and ninety-five million for the high-risk structures. And remember, they're not entire schools, they're structures, right? So there may be some messaging that we would need to do in the future about what we're talking about, what seismic upgrades here. But as an exercise to come down from seven sixty-six, if we were to take ninety-five million off of that, we're down to six seventy-one.
And you took off the high risk and kept the very high risk.
Yes, and so what do we retain? We retain fifty-six million for very high risk. That make sense? Yeah, so we're heading in the right direction. On the non-routine maintenance, fifteen million out reduces us down to six fifty-six. And that leaves thirty-seven million for R and R work at all of the administrative buildings. So all of the administrative buildings, like this one, needs a completely new HVAC system. Brand new. There's no fixing this one anymore. The people in this building would be happy to know that. Now, on the, so what do we leave in for the administrative buildings? So on the administrative buildings, what did I take out? That's non-routine. On the administrative buildings... I lost track of my math.
Yeah, there's something wrong with it.
Yeah, fifteen million, this leaves fifty million, sorry about that.
And that's a six, six, five, six. And your note, your bottom number? Eleven minus five is six. Yeah.
Those are good numbers. We're going to make them better as we... All right, and then on the administrative buildings, the forty-nine, we can reduce that by twelve, which leaves thirty-seven for the R and R work on administrative buildings. And also this leaves us an opportunity to build out the Gaffin Road property in the future. That's also part of the core infrastructure. It wasn't, it wasn't pulled on. It wasn't part of the task force recommendation specifically. It's tied to core capacity, though, and core infrastructure because we talk about being overcrowded because we have more kids coming in than... Because we have more kids coming in the future. Well, those kids need bus. And right now, our Gaff, our Hawthorne, uh, property is overcrowded. We have no room for additional buses. And our maintenance facilities are extremely limited. So, this figure would include money for a build out of Gaffin Road, which the board years ago made the decision to head in that direction. Just haven't been able to do it since then. And then safety and security, we're talking about removing twenty million from that. Which leaves seventeen million. And so of that seventeen million, we had to, uh, you've got, uh, the new card reader upgrade throughout the district, uh, which is important to pull well. You also have lighting improvements, site improvements, and, uh, the repositioning and the redesign of entry limits. But just not as many as what was included in the full thirty-seven million. And then, that gives us to six twenty-four. Uh, technology, we have six million. Again, these are, this is just a way to size the number. Right, this is just, if we're coming off of seven sixty-six, which is the message that we heard you, seven sixty-six is too high. And the core, uh, central feature of the bond is around overcrowding. We didn't touch this in this exercise, but we went down through the rest of them. The last one is Americans with disability were ADA. Um, and there was nine million in the recommendation. And if we reduce that by four, we have now reached six hundred and fourteen million. Again, just a quick exercise moving from seven sixty-six and how we might go out back. Uh, this is where I think that, uh, in the future, the board has to help staff determine what your priorities are. Because as we, um, work to develop a recommendation, that will need some direction from you on that. Um, we're going to need to know what your parameters are and what makes sense for you. This was just an illustration. I'm not suggesting that this is the number that the board land on. Uh, but this is a way to move off of the seven sixty-six, using everything that we just heard tonight, um, from Melissa and Jean. Any questions?
Marty?
I have a question that you probably can't answer. I'm curious, at any moment in time, how many students are in a very high-risk building?
You're right, forty-one thousand.
No.
No, I mean, certain parts of certain buildings are high risk, are very high risk, is my understanding. So if you take a school, maybe one portion of the school is very high risk, another portion may not be. So, what number of students are in the portions of schools that are very high risk? And I don't know if you can answer that, but it's like, you know, how many kids are in dangerous places if there was an earthquake?
Yeah, a- and you're right, I, I don't have that information, uh, with us. But clearly, uh, with, at whatever level in a bond, we would be making progress towards, um, providing a safer environment for the kids. And remember, of the four, of our four schools, uh, that were, the entire building was very high risk. The unreinforced missionary buildings, the Richmond, Englewood, Highland, and now McKinley this summer. Those were all being addressed
Right.
with the existing bond. So, we've made, we've made headway in those areas. So, um, just getting back to this, so how much did we retain out of this figure? We retained a hundred and seventy-one million in the areas that matter a lot to the voters based on the polling results. And the four hundred and forty-three. Uh, and the four hundred and forty-three um, with the core infrastructure. So, what other questions do you have?
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding something, Mike. And, and I'm, as everyone knows, a little bit slow. So, what you're telling me is that in the six fourteen that would be left, we're including the items that people have said aren't really that important to them at the full rates proposed by the task force. And we're reducing the items that people said they wanted or felt more strongly about to a lesser rate in this, the six fourteen. Is, am I missing something?
Uh, do you have any specific areas?
Well, I mean, I'm looking up here. I mean, we, the, you, you've mentioned a couple times, for example, my colleague to the right is, points out the seismic. And we saw that in the survey, that that was an important item.
Right.
You're proposing that that be reduced by fifty-six million?
By ninety-five.
By seismic?
Uh huh.
Okay, so seismic is reduced by ninety-five million, even though that's a priority for the survey people. Why are we cutting ninety-five million of what would seem to be a priority, or you're suggesting for us to look at? Ninety-five million from a priority when we still have other items down lower in the survey that the task force recommended that don't poll as well? Why wouldn't we fully want to do those? Maybe Jay needs to answer that for me. I'm, I'm confused.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
First?
Sure.
Um, so it seems to me that it's important for us to know what polls well. It's important for us to, uh, be prepared to have a campaign where we speak about those things that poll well. But at the same time, it's incumbent upon us as the leaders in the district to make decisions about what's best. We cannot just make decisions based on the polling results. We can't ignore the polling results, but if, if the community says we're not, we, you know, this isn't, I'm making this up, they didn't say this, it wasn't polled, but if, if they say, you know, we don't want to have gyms anymore in your schools, that's a waste of money, kids can just play outside, we shouldn't have gyms. Well, if that's what they say, we have to make decisions that we think are in the best interest of our students. And so, is it gonna all match up? No. But we cannot lose the things that poll the best, so that we can run a campaign that talks about those things.
I'm, and that's not what I'm saying. My question is, why are we reducing those items that poll well? And not reducing some of the items that don't poll as well?
A- and again, this was just
I know.
an illustration of how, how do you move off of seven sixty-six? Because we clearly heard the message that we need to do that. Um, could easily have switched
the fifty-six million with the ninety-five. And I, and I think that's part of what we'll need some guidance on from the board. This was just an illustration on how to move off of seven sixty-six.
I just wanna make sure that, because that didn't calculate my guess.
This wasn't a recommendation, this was an example.
Ultimately, uh, you, you will help us with the recommendation that will use similar math. But we'll need your sense of prioritization to do it. Yes?
So, um, just personally, given the high polling, plus my concern for our kids' safety, reducing the seismic by sixty-three percent is not very good for me.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And, and that's what we'll need to hear more of uh, as we work towards providing you with, uh, with a staff recommendation on the size of the bond and the timing, uh, based on what we've heard.
Chuck?
Yeah, I was just going to, my impression was, this isn't a proposal, this is an example. My question is, is when it gets down to six hundred and fourteen million, what's the cost per thousand at that level?
Uh, that's right at the low end of the sweet spot, the, uh, of the one fifty-one to two fifty.
So, that's kind of what we're looking at, reducing to get to the sweet spot is.
This gets us to the low end of that one fifty-one to two fifty. So, as you prioritize what you feel is important to include in the bond, there's room to go higher, is, is the point of this exercise. We're already at the low end of the sweet spot of an increase with that number. If you feel that seismic as a group is more important, and you don't wanna cut any of it, or maybe just ten or fifteen percent, um, that's what we'll need to know.
So in terms of process, um, we've heard the results, we've asked questions. You've given us an example of the way that we move off of seven sixty-six. Um, we, uh, have a meeting on Tuesday of next week. Um, and at that meeting, we will hear a, um, recommendation from the district on an amount. Um, let me finish my sentence, and then you can ask your question. Uh, we're going to ask for a recommendation from the district on both, uh, the size of the bond. I'm assuming that when you make a recommendation about the size, you will also have a recommendation of components that get you to that size.
Yes.
And timing of that. Do you need anything more from us in the way of discussion to help you be prepared to bring some such report to us next Tuesday, which is less than a week?
Yes, um, thank you for that. It would, it would be helpful, uh, to know, just from a general sense, if you feel that this approach would be beneficial.
Um, and, um, that question is on the table. Marty had a question, and Rick has his hand up.
And I think I asked it and I got an answer, but I'm gonna ask it again to make sure I remember correctly. Capacity and infrastructure includes a new school for Auburn, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And that was what, forty million?
It's, uh, the initial pricing was around forty-five. Now remember, that includes, uh, that does seem like a large increase, given the fact that we built three elementary schools in the two thousand eight bond. Um, some of the things, just so you know, that drive the cost up now, is all of the other bond measures that are currently under construction. And the lack of availability of contractors. So the pricing is influenced dramatically. And remember, in two thousand eight, we received exceptional pricing because of the Great Recession. And so we are in a different world, and comparing to where we were in two thousand eight with this bond and looking forward, there is a huge price difference. But Auburn also has the pricing of additional land, so it's purchasing land as well that's built into that number. It's a total number, not just a construction cost of, of forty, forty-five million.
And the second part of that, Auburn is landlocked, is that right? So it cannot be made larger.
Uh, that's right, yeah, it would, it's, it's not a functional site at the larger school. That's, at least that's our, uh, interpretation.
Rick?
So we had, we received a report from the task force that outlined costs in all these areas, and that led to the seven sixty-six. What I, what I, what I wanna hear back from staff in a recommendation is, uh, how to, how to break those costs down in each area. What's the minimum necessary? Now, now, technology did not poll well. Uh, but we probably can't do away with twelve million in technology. There's gotta be some need there. We need uh, at least a minimum to put into the bond. So I think the recommendation from the staff needs to have whatever the minimum needs are in those lesser areas, along with, uh, reductions, as you're suggesting, to get us to uh, a number between the one-five and the two-five, so.
Okay.
I don't see getting rid of everything because that technology, I'm gonna pick on technology because it didn't poll well. Because I know there's some needs that have to be addressed, so. And it looks like, that's kind of the step you've done there. You, in the example, you've retained some of it.
Right.
But removed some as well.
Right, okay. So, so more background on, uh, what's retained and, and why that number is what it is. Whether it's for technology, six million, or eight million, or four.
Right.
Chuck?
To me, it's just a matter of perspective. I look at Beaverton right now, and they spent two hundred and fifty million dollars to build a new high school with their last bond. And back in two thousand eight, for two hundred and forty-two million, we built a new middle school and four elementary schools, and deferred maintenance throughout the whole district. So, for the cost of one high school today, so. It's a different, uh, a different pricing situation, for sure.
Nancy, are you asking for a conversation about timing as well tonight?
Um, I'm asking, um, so, this, this is a work session, we can't make any decisions. I'm asking you, uh, to give feedback to the district about what you would like in their recommendation or any direction that you wanna make sure is addressed in that recommendation that is coming to us on Tuesday, which will include a recommendation for amount, what's included, and timing.
Okay.
So at that time, we'll have the opportunity to have a more robust conversation, once we have something on the table, that's a regular meeting. We can take votes.
I just think, um, we're not ready for a November election. You've got, you're in June now. It's, it's June first, let's just call it what it is, it's June first. Three months of summer, people on vacation. You've heard from our consultants, you'd have to raise around two hundred thousand dollars for a pro campaign. That's not gonna come from the district, that's gonna come from people out in the community, obviously. As a board member supporting this, I'd work that, but I just don't think November is gonna be a likely election opportunity for us. We're probably looking more at May. If you look at the results that Melissa shared with us, those that went out in November versus those that go out in May. Um, that also gives us an additional, you know, seven months to have the conversation with our community about what it is we've triaged out of a seven hundred and sixty-six million dollar bond. What are those needs in our community? What are we doing for boys and girls with this money in our community? Because either way you look at it, you're asking our taxpayers to increase almost double, at least with Mike's math, double the amount they're paying per thousand currently on assessed value. Um, I think we're gonna need that time to have that conversation. And remember, we're in a situation much different than Portland. We don't have the ability to tax our largest facilities in our city. There are state government office buildings that don't provide property taxes to us. Portland has a little bit different, unique situation. Those big high-rise office buildings in downtown Portland pay property taxes. Our largest facilities don't.
Oh, and their seven hundred and ninety million dollar bond, I believe, was in the range of about a dollar per thousand.
That's why. They can spread it over a, a
Right.
a larger amount. So, i- if timing is gonna be something we're gonna consider, I'd look at a May versus a November.
I would agree with that. I don't think we should rush it. We should do a good job, make sure we're very thorough.
And I think we need to, at some point, uh, you know, honor the work of the task force. While we, as a board, work with our community on what's, you know, a triage lifts off of seven sixty-six, we've gotta honor that work of that task force, have them also work with us on some of that. We're not gonna be able to do that between now and November. You've got, as I said, three months of summer. We've got the district starting school in September. You're really down to a month to run a campaign. I just don't see it as something we're gonna be able to do.
Sounds like you got a little direction there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments, questions? You feel like you have enough from us in clarity about?
I, I do, yeah. I, I mean, I think we're really familiar with the information. The, uh, information that was presented tonight was phenomenal, and it helps us. Uh, it, we'll use that as a criteria to justify the changes that we'll bring to you in the proposal.
I have a question for Nancy, when the time's right.
I have one more question that I should've asked when you two were at the podium, but I didn't write it down, so I forgot it. Um, it did not poll well to rebuild Auburn. But you did not poll, um, building a new elementary school to relieve crowding.
No, so, we just polled on Auburn. And it didn't, you're right, it did not poll well. It didn't do well in prior experience, it didn't do well on the upcoming series.
Right, and part of our thinking around the Auburn piece that didn't work, that didn't get worked into the, uh, the survey is that, um, the repurposed Auburn would be a, um, early learning, uh, facility, uh, childhood education that would allow us to get out of our long, our leases that we have in place now, over at the East Salem Community Center. So, that would have tied into the cost containment, you know, uh, reducing operational costs that seems to poll well across the board.
And it, I, it leaves me to wonder if you have Auburn. And it, I, it leaves me to wonder, if you have Auburn Early Learning Center in the place that it is now, and you build a new school and name it Kelly Carlisle Elementary School, then it's, you know, it...
You know we have a policy that somebody has to be dead before we name a building.
It is not a strict policy. It is not a strict policy.
I was just wondering if you knew something that we all didn't.
We've named some schools after living people, and, and, you know...
But we changed that policy. Have to be passed away now, so.
If they...
You're okay, right, Kelly?
I'm good.
Okay.
If they can sing with a guitar, I think maybe we should name a school after them. But anyway, that has, that's a piece that we don't really know.
Right.
Sorry.
And it's not, can't do Auburn School as part of the addressing overcrowding. And if I were, one of the things, part of my contracts is to write your ballot title when you decide what you're going to do. And I would not separate that out of that, although I would tuck it in with your 22 other school or students.
And I'm almost betting that of the 300-plus respondents, only maybe a third of them even know where Auburn Elementary School is, or that we even had an Auburn Elementary School.
Right.
I have a question for the board.
Yes, sir.
Why do we, why are we meeting on Tuesday if we're going to delay this so there's no urgency, or as much urgency now?
To have, have a decision by the 13th and have two readings.
But why? If we're not, if we're, if we're not going...
We're hearing...
If we're going for a November election, I understand and I agree. But I, maybe we need to do a poll of the board about this concept of November versus May. Because I, I think I probably, if I'm reading the board correctly, there might not be four votes to go for November.
Um, I, we're not, the decision about whether we meet and move forward is not, is not predicated on the decision to when we're going. The timing is on moving something through to get the work started, one way or the other.
But just thinking, you know, it is a three-day weekend, so basically, he has three business days, and I don't know what type of time is required, but maybe a little mercy so he can enjoy his weekend, I don't know.
My time's not the issue.
He's been planning this time already.
I think whether we go in May or we go in November, I think the earlier we get something before the board to take a look at, so that we can begin looking at what the process is, Paul, even if we go in May, I think the, the earlier we can get together to start talking about, and I think the biggest thing we've really got to talk about isn't whether we go in May or November, it's what's left on the list and what goes off the list. And that's going to be a process that's probably going to take more than just Tuesday. And it should start as soon as we possibly can to begin that process.
Start with a new board. Paul?
Okay, but I'm, I'm also concerned about, we have three new board members coming on, and they need to be somewhere included in the process. And if the timeline I'm hearing is correct, they would not be included in the discussion about what's in or what's out. And that's why I'm wondering if we don't need to slow this down a little bit. Not that I'm not excited about having a meeting, see you all again on Tuesday, but...
Right, I might be able to help a little bit. This, the staff recommendation that we're thinking about bringing to you on Tuesday, and then again on the 13th of June, is, it doesn't lock the board in. This is just that you help decide a general size and a timing that will be incredibly important for the district in preparing for the bond campaign and, and the election as well. You wouldn't, if you went in May of 18, you wouldn't actually have the bond title developed until January or, along those lines. So, there's plenty of time to refine the numbers. You wouldn't be locking in on a specific number by June anyways, but it does lay the foundation of the work and the priorities of the, the existing board in moving forward.
And the specifics of what's in and what's out get really completely nailed down with that ballot title.
Yes, oh, it's very specific. I mean, it can be very specific.
Does that make sense?
I didn't say it didn't make sense, I just don't agree with it. It's easy.
So, any other comments or questions? It sounds to me like we're meeting on Tuesday with a recommendation from the district and a hearty discussion. And until then, I think we're adjourned.